It's April ninth and seven PM, time to begin our planning commission for this month. We will begin by having an invocation led by Commissioner Hatley, followed by a flag salute led by Commissioner Gerber. Please stand.
Lord, we come before you this evening to do that. Please guide our hearts and minds to do great things for this great city of ours. And it helps us fulfill that obligation to the citizens. Also, would you please guide the hearts and minds of our blooded future, our teachers, so they may come to a helpful decision soon, so our children can get back to school? And as always, please watch over our first responders and our men and women of our military, wherever they may be in this country and around the world, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please Kathy.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hatley.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Gerber.
Here.
Item one is the approval of the minutes of March 12th, 2018 meeting. You have those in your packet. Do anybody have any corrections, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the minutes as posted.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two is the visitors section. If there's anyone here that would address the commission about a non-agended item, now would be the time to step forward and do so. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by Thomas Atkins for a second curb cut located at 1178 Moose Street here in Yukon. Is there someone here on that? Yes, sir. You step to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name's Thomas Atkins and the address is 1178 Moose, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Okay, tell us what you need here, sir.
I'm wanting to install a second, well, I want to take out my existing drive and put in a second drive as well with a connecting drive between the two, basically put in a circle drive.
Well, we've done this many times for people. Do any of the commissioners have questions for this gentleman?
What are you, where are the current driveway, yes, what are you going to do with that?
Replace it, just make it a little wider.
Okay, okay, it'll be concrete now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, yeah. I'm also a concrete contractor, that's what I do for a living too, so.
Is that a new drive that's going up on the other side?
On the east side, yeah. That's what, yeah.
Okay, is that gonna just go back to the backyard there?
It's gonna stop at the gate, but it's gonna connect with a circle to the main drive.
Anyone else? Anyone care to read the motion?
Yeah, I'll read it. In the case of the request by Thomas Atkins to install a new curb cut at 1178 Moose Street, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be approved.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Item four is to hear a request by Cassidy Docterman and Charles and Barbara Harris for a rezone from a C1 office district to a C2 convenience commercial district located at 280 South Yukon Parkway, Yukon, Oklahoma. That's lot one, block seven of Sunrise Hills, Canadian County. Someone here on that?
My name is Cassidy Docterman and I've been a Yukon resident for nine and a half years. Of those nine years, I have also run an in-home daycare.
Can you give us your address currently?
It's 1059 Rain Tree Mansion here in Yukon.
Okay.
During that time of doing in-home daycare, I got my bachelor's and master's in order to open a facility daycare. So, here tonight, I'm requesting that the property at 280 South Yukon Parkway be rezoned to a, from a C1 to a C2 with a conditional use permit, which we've listed several conditions that we will follow in order to turn that into a daycare. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions or concerns that you guys may have for that rezoning.
Are you having to do any construction inside or changing anything?
We will be doing construction inside to eliminate, we have about 11 rooms in there that we'll have to turn into seven rooms, so we'll knock down some walls, we'll have to add a kitchen and a bathroom, sinks in the infant area. And I have Jerry Moon, our contractor, with us to answer any questions that you guys may have regarding the construction as well, but nothing on the outside besides a fenced-in area in the back.
So the state will combine and?
I have been in contact with my DHS worker and she approves the building and she will be with me step by step with Jerry in order to make sure it's perfect for the daycare.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody have a question for this young lady? Okay. Let's get a motion and then if anybody else in the audience has anything they'd like to say, we can do it then.
I'll read it.
Okay.
In the case of the rezoning application for Cassidy Docterman, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council.
We have a second? A motion and a second. Is there anyone that'd like to ask a question or make comments from the audience? Step to microphone, please, and say your name and address.
My name's Ronnie Evans. I live at 1128 Landmark Drive. I'm speaking, I've got a statement from Stan Brooks who lives at 1100 Landmark Drive. He had mouth surgery due to cancer this morning and couldn't be here, so I've got a statement from him I'd like to read. We are Stan and Shirley Brooks. We're not able to attend tonight due to having surgery earlier today. We live at 1100 Landmark Drive across from said property. Our concern is for a child getting out and going down to the pond and possibly drowning, or getting run over by the traffic on Yukon Parkway and Land, or Landmark Drive. My wife has had two accidents backing out of our driveway due to extremely fast traffic, turning off of Yukon Parkway into Landmark Drive. Our brick mailbox has been completely destroyed and the car was totaled, the car that hit it. Recently, a man was hit by a vehicle in the same area. Traffic on Landmark Drive is very high due to the fact that there is a median at the intersection of Yukon Parkway and 39th Street that makes it impossible for someone coming from the Lake Overhuster or Lake, on Lakeshore Drive to make a left-hand turn onto Yukon Parkway. The median is also makes it difficult for larger vehicles, like large, like trucks and large SUVs, to make a right-hand turn into the turning lane. As homes continue to be built in the area, it's over towards the Lake Overhuster area, the traffic will continue to increase. The main source of the traffic is people commuting to and from work and taking their kids to school. The traffic backs up anywhere from three to five, three to 15 cars or more in the morning and evening on Landmark Drive. By my figures, the daycare traffic would add at least 50 to 100 more cars per day to the traffic issues. The backup would occur at the same time that people would be dropping off their kids at daycare. Considering that the only, that the only in-and-out drive for the proposed daycare center is located on Landmark Drive and with the traffic already backing up past the proposed daycare center's only entrance and exit, the entrance and exit is going to get blocked. Therefore, if you're going to have more traffic tie-ups on Landmark Drive for the cars trying to go north and south on Yukon Parkway than you already now have. For these reasons, we are against the proposed daycare center. And I concur with what Stan says. The traffic on Landmark because of the people that live over towards Lake Hefner or Lake Overhuster and cutting through our street to turn left onto Yukon Parkway is every morning and every evening, we have a lot of traffic and it's just a nightmare and we don't need this extra addition.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, how many children do you expect to place in your business there?
Our highest capacity that we can have is 71, so it's a very low enrollment for a daycare.
Seventy-one?
Seventy-one.
Is a bunch of little kids, okay. Now, what he has to say, I mean, I'm personally very well acquainted with that building. Do you have any plans to?
We have spoke before about putting another entrance off of Yukon Parkway. That way it could be almost a circle drive even to get out, have two entrances and two exits. We didn't put that in the plan now just because expense-wise, that wasn't part of what we planned for. The pond out back is a big issue for me because I also have four kids. This is why I do what I do. There was a child that just died last week, this past week, from a pond, so it terrifies me, it does. But there will be no, I mean, we will take them, the older kids, six plus, to go on a fishing adventure. We will do those things, but the little kids will, there will be no way that they get out. That'll be one of those, it's been, I mean, I've had the daycare for nine years and that's my biggest concern is an injury or anything that is harmful to a child. Accidents do happen, but it will be my main priority to keep that from happening. The gate, there will be one exit on the gate that we have to have, DHS makes us do that, but it'll be closest to the building. It'll be locked from the inside where people can't get in. So it will be locked, one teacher will have the key, which will probably be myself. But we will do everything in our power to eliminate the traffic. We will have enrollment times, but we have already talked with the library that parents can park over there, so we won't have tons of parking issues during those evening hours for social, but those won't be, they'll be minimal.
How many staff do you expect to have?
We will have anywhere from eight to 11.
Okay. Now, I have a question too. Would, I know your office hours here from 6:30 to 6:00 PM. Do you anticipate, is it staggered when children will show up, or does it tend to be, everybody tend to come in at the same time?
Most likely, we'll have anywhere from a few drop-off at 6:30 to 8 o'clock to 10 o'clock. Right now, my daycare, I have people coming at 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock, so the average time, it varies.
Okay.
They'll be coming, they're not all coming at 6:30 or 7:30, so the time does vary and I don't believe there'll be tons of traffic issues. There will be some, but I didn't anticipate too much for that.
Thanks.
Mitchell, am I dreaming, or do I somewhere in the back of my mind remember that we're on the, not on the letting, but on the horizon of having that whole intersection reconfigured there at 66 and Yukon Parkway?
Right now, it is not on the ACOG plan anymore to be done. We're trying to get it back on the ACOG plan, but it's gonna take some time.
Okay, because that, that is a, you know, that is a problem for people coming up O-66. They, they either cut through the convenience store, which is illegal, but they do it all the time, or they swing around and come up Landmark Drive.
Yes.
Anybody else have anything?
So we're saying that people are coming northbound on Yukon Parkway and using Landmark to cut over to Lakeshore and vice versa.
Well, not so much that direction, because you can go on up to 66, O-66 and go down that way.
Yeah, but the traffic's always backed up to Florida.
Yeah, it backs up there too, yeah. There's, I mean, but it does thin out during the day, but the gentleman is right.
But mostly it's coming, people coming out of the neighborhoods?
Yes.
To the east and cutting through?
They're, they're going west towards Yukon Parkway, yeah.
May I propose a possible solution?
Your name, please.
My name is Alicia Strawn. I am going to be employed by Cassidy Docterman at the facility. What would the possibility of us, because of the traffic issue, because I live in that same neighborhood, so I do understand the concerns with it backing up, and then if somebody's waiting to turn into that one entrance, what would be the process to get the approval to create another entrance onto Yukon Parkway and/or even to the library to kind of, because there's not a lot of high traffic in that area and people could come from, I can't think of the name of that road right there by the convenience store. They could come through that way to drop their children off and we would maintain, you know, the one-way directions.
You're talking about a curb cut onto a major street and that is a long process?
Or even into the library's drive, so that way we would utilize the same entrance, not create a new entrance, but that same entrance right there by the library that would create a?
Well, I don't think the library wants people blowing through their parking lot either, because they have?
It was just an idea.
Yeah.
And the egress into the parking lot, probably wouldn't allow that.
Yeah, and I've seen people not only tear through the convenience store, but they also swing through the library parking lot, where we have elderly patrons during the day.
Right.
And then around behind it is not conducive because of the hill into the facility there. I mean, it's very steep. It's just something that is, because Yukon is growing, there is traffic, there's traffic everywhere we look. I've, I live in Parkland and there's no turning left out of Parkland at 5 o'clock. I mean, it just, it doesn't happen, or every morning and at Christmas time. We, we don't do that. So, I mean, I appreciate what this gentleman said, but there's some, that, that building has some type of use and any, any type of use, a commercial use, is gonna have traffic in there. So, thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else in the audience have anything else? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward, say your name and address.
My name is Kathleen Behringer and I live at 1116 Landmark Drive, so I'm, I think, the fifth house down from South Yukon Parkway. My concern is the traffic. My husband and I both have almost been hit backing out of our driveway, no matter how many times you look. And I know the speed limit is supposed to 25 miles an hour, but very few people drive 25 miles an hour. Even the school buses that come down the street do not do 25 miles an hour. So, there's, there's either gonna have to be more police patrols, which we've asked for before, because it's just a continual problem. And years ago, I don't remember how many years ago, we wanted to slow traffic down on the street and we wanted to put speed bumps in and the city council said no. And it was like, a year or months later, they ended up putting speed bumps on McConnell. All that did, by putting speed bumps on McConnell, was to force more traffic on our street because people trying to get to South Yukon Parkway, coming from the residential area there, did not want to go across the speed bump, so they come down Oakie Ridge and they come down Landmark Drive. Take the speed bumps out, maybe alleviate some of the traffic on Landmark Drive. That's just a suggestion I have, because we couldn't put the speed bumps in.
You might propose that to the traffic commission?
Just a comment. The other question I have is, I don't have a problem with children and that, I mean, the schools and behind us, you hear kids and that throughout the day and that's, that's not a problem, I have no problem with that. But what happens if it doesn't stay or remain a daycare? And with you rezoning it, what if it ends up being another business that ends up being a convenience store and then you have tons of traffic? It is a residential street, but sometimes it's being treated like it is a commercial street and it's, it's a residential street with families and children. And that's my concern, so what happens if it doesn't remain a daycare?
Well, I imagine the owner would put it back up for sale or lease and whatever business would want to be in there would again have to go through the city's main office and either be rezoned to whatever they want it to be, or get a conditional use permit, which would put stipulations on it that they have to follow, or they can't, she can't stay in business if she doesn't follow the conditional use permits. And if she does that and the city, the office checks it out, well then she'll be able to retain her, her business license. It's, there's, there's no answer to this. I mean, it's, it's Yukon, it's got a lot of traffic, we've got a lot of people. Garth Brooks, Cornwell, Vandement, everywhere. There's traffic everywhere. We've all, and I, I know what you're saying. The police, I don't know if they could put enough police to keep things slowed down, but all the years that I worked out of that building, I know what you're saying. And there's just, there's no answer to it. Yes, ma'am. Step forward and say your name and address, please.
My name is Carla Darter and I live at 1112 Landmark Drive.
Hold that down just a little bit.
Carla Darter and I live at 1112 Landmark Drive. And my question is, if I could ask you Larry, just a personal opinion. In a few years, we're planning on selling our house and moving to Spanish Cove, and so, do you think that would cause any problem with us selling our house, since you know that?
I, from just off the top of my head, I would say no, because it'll probably be younger people.
That's what my daughter thinks.
And they possibly would have children that, that would be enhancing, they'd say, well, I can walk my children across the street to the daycare. I don't think it would hurt you. Daycares generally don't, as long as they're not in your backyard hollering all day long like you've got a school. I don't think it would bother you.
Okay, thank you.
Any, yes, ma'am?
I'm Pat Holcomb and I'm at 1124 Landmark. And you know, you mentioned roads, Garth Brooks, Vandement and all these, but they're, they're main thoroughfares. Landmark isn't. And I, I have a hard time sometimes just backing out of my driveway and I live in the middle because of all the traffic coming and going. And you wait and you wait and you wait. And then, you know, at 5 o'clock, you try to get down to the end of Landmark, you can't turn onto Yukon Parkway. And you start having those cars coming out of there and I realize that it's gonna be staggered, but I also know from working over the years that not everybody goes to work at the same time, but most everybody gets off about the same time. So you're gonna have a lot of traffic there and you can't, you can't get down through there and get on Yukon Parkway without having to several cars and wait and wait and wait. I don't think we're gonna put a light there, but it's gonna get to that point. But anyway, that's my concern.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
My name's Jason Kitchell. I live at 1120 Landmark Drive and I just had a question actually on the no parking in the street being permitted. I'd like to know how that's gonna be enforced.
Don't talk to one another, stand up and?
We will enforce that just by telling parents, there is no parking on the street. We have designated parking spots for the business, end of story. You don't park out there. If you park out there, you are not allowed to come in. I think that's extremely important to set in stone as we start the business. We have parking down our street where we live and it's, it's a nuisance. People, when they drop my kids, like the kids off at my daycare, they're parked in the street. It just doesn't work. We will not allow that at all.
How accurate, you showed, you showed 14 parking spaces and a pickup zone. Is that accurate? Can your dealer say that?
Mr. Chairman, have him come up, please. Yeah. Come up and say your name, please, and the address.
Jerry Moon.
Where you live, sir?
I live in Oklahoma City.
Okay.
We haven't done a final count on, on the parking spaces, but that's a pretty good estimate. We may pick up one somewhere when we restrip it and do all that, so.
So more spots than you have at present?
Oh, yeah.
And there's always parking on that grass.
The drive-through area is rather large, so I think we can get at least probably two cars in, going in and out, side by side.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We've, we have a motion and a second to approve of this. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Thank all of you for your comments and we have one more for this item. Item five, to hear a request by Cassidy Docterman and Charles and Barbara Harris for a conditional use permit located at 280 South Yukon Parkway, Yukon, Oklahoma, lot one, block seven, Sunrise Hills. Mitchell, what are some of the conditions that you?
This is where we can add conditions that they may have concerns, like no parking on the north side of the street along where this property butts. So they could add that as one of the conditions. That would be an enforceable deal.
Okay.
Or any other things that we'd like to add at this point?
I definitely feel like the, I mean, you take your life in your car's hands if you park out on that street.
Just to point it out, there, that condition is on the CUP already as item number seven.
Okay, thank you.
But is that on number seven? Is the end of that supposed to be, no parking shall be permitted on Landmark Drive or South Yukon Parkway?
Yes.
South Yukon Parkway?
In the driveline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any other conditional use permits that y'all would like to put on there?
I have a question and it probably involved from the last hearing. You said you're expecting about 71 children?
That's maximum capacity.
And eight to 10 employees. That's eight to 10, no, wait a minute, that's seven to 10 children per employee.
The ratios are different when it, when you have different ages, so working with DHS, the younger the child is, the more teachers you have to have. So, with the facility that we have, we'll have a room of four infants, you have one teacher. You have a room of one-year-old, one to two-year-olds and you have two teachers, the higher you go up, so your three-year-old room only has one teacher, your four-year-old room only has one teacher. When you get up to the school-aged children, it would be myself, I would be working with them after school and one other teacher. So really, the max teachers that I would have or employees, there would be 11.
So.
Would the school buses swing through there to pick kids up and drop them off?
No, school buses are not allowed to do that. Now, we will buy a 15-passenger van or a small minibus to transport kids back and forth to school, but it will not be a large bus by any means. They are not allowed to deliver, to pick up for daycares.
Okay. What's the oldest child?
Twelve.
Twelve, you're right, twelve.
I've got a question for Mitchell real quick. You know, looking at, getting into this parking lot looks fairly easy, but as you've got people coming in and out. Mitchell, on the, on the north side of that, you know, we were, you were entertaining that discussion earlier as far? as far as having a, an arterial that links up with that driveway behind the Dale Robertson Center of the library. Do you see any reason why, besides the, the, the expense of having to put that in, that, that wouldn't be a viable alternative as far as having people only come in the entrance and they would actually exit on the other side, on the north side, behind the Dale Robertson Center?
Well, there's several issues. There's a difference in elevation between the two parking lots.
Tremendous difference.
Yes. Uh, the steepness of it would be pretty extreme. So that'd be something that would discourage.
Wall.
This is pretty extreme.
Okay.
That driveway also is sometimes chained off.
Yes, well, it's a service drive for the building, for the building, so it's not an actual drive.
Okay, thanks. I just wanna entertain the possibility of having, getting traffic through there easier.
What I was gonna say is, if you look at the building and you look at the land, yes, when you're over here to the east side of the back of the community center, the land is higher. But the closer you get to South Yukon Parkway, the flatter it is.
Correct.
So if you.
I don't know if you can come out.
No, but if you, if you come out, um, behind, there's that vacant lot to the west of the community center and if you have, let's see, here's the building here. If you have, uh, and if people come in here and they exit here.
That's what I was looking at, yeah.
Well, it's fairly flat here, but the more you get over here.
Correct.
Deeper it is, but it flattens out over here. So people, if they would exit here, they would, would not be allowed to do a right turn, but they could do a left turn.
Correct.
That's.
Some see how that's possible cuz you're trying to turn left if people are trying to turn into that spot at the exact same time. And that's, it's.
Well, just an exit only.
No, no, but you still have people coming into the library area.
Well, actually, that's, that's the back entrance that's not really used very much is the reason why I was kinda saying that because that's really, not really utilized at all. Everybody tends to go through the other way, but just, just don't look at other options.
Traffic from coming in that way, though.
Okay, we have, um, uh, would someone care to make a motion for the, uh, conditional use permit?
Okay. In the case of the application for a continued conditional use permit submitted by Cassidy Dockerman, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public's hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. The conditional use permit is granted solely to Cassidy Dockerman in order to establish a daycare center. Appropriate permits for fencing and signage are not included in this approval and will be sought prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. It is acknowledged that the approval covers operational items as listed in the submitted information. This approval is non-transferable. Two, applicant shall screen from view any dumpsters or group of trashcans as may be used for the proposed daycare. Said screening shall be a sufficient height to be trashed and boiled out of receptacles, a minimum of six feet in height. Lighting on standard shall utilize proper methods to shield the air from the residential neighborhood to the south, shield directional lighting and stuff. Privacy fences shall be installed around the playground area at a minimum height of six feet. And the fly site it shall be limited to use on the existing pole sign and wall sign. Sufficient directional signage shall be posted on site in order to ensure adequate flow onto and off of site. Number six, no additional curb cut shall be permitted. Number seven, parking areas shall be maintained by the applicant, including maintaining existing spacing and scrapping when necessary. No parking shall be permitted on Landmark Drive or South Yukon Parkway.
I'll second. Okay, we've had a mo. Motion and second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Item six is to hear a request by Mitchell Horton, City of Yukon, for a conditional use permit on a billboard located at one six four five zero West I forty, Yukon, Oklahoma. Mitchell?
Yes, as you are aware, that this is something we've talked about many times in the past. The councils in the past have talked about ways to pull traffic off of I forty headed east into town. Uh, one of the things that was recommended and it keeps being recommended is that we come up some type of sign that would allow us to pull people off going eastbound into Yukon city limits. So tonight, we're before you, we're proposing to have an E M D sign that is fourteen feet by forty-eight feet, front and back, located west of Gregory on the south side of I forty where the traffic, uh, going east is a primary deal and, uh, west is a secondary deal. So I'm here for questions if you'd like to discuss what we're proposing or if you'd like to go in more detail, so.
Well, going west, there wouldn't be an off-ramp with her.
No, west is really, uh, secondary is when we were talking to.
Remember when we're coming back, right?
Yes, remember when we come back also. It would help offset the cost for advertisement to help pay for the, uh, proposed, uh, sign.
So the city of Yukon will own this site?
That's what's being proposed tonight to you.
And the city would be the primary user for?
Eastbound. For Yukon businesses, Yukon events, Yukon happenings, things that happen in Yukon is what the intent was. And this is something that's gone on, uh, Mister Chairman, what, eighteen years, nineteen years?
Yeah, I would, when I was on the council, we were talking about it then.
So this is, I, I would say probably at least nineteen years of discussion and now we're proposing to move forward with it if, if we can make this economic feasible for us. But this is one of the steps that we have to do before we can even meet with a sign, contractor to design the sign that we're talking about.
Do we own the ground?
We have a land lease.
We did. Okay.
We don't start paying anything until, uh, it's approved by council.
So just west of Gregory is?
Waste.
Quarter mile?
About, yes, a little bit over a quarter of a mile. All the sign locations between there and all the way to Garth Brooks have been taken up and that was the closest one that we could find. And actually, we've got two sign locations depending on how many Yukon businesses want to use the service.
Mitchell, you saying that you were gonna have a condition of just advertising Yukon sites and businesses?
That is the primary.
As a condition?
No, that's not a condition because primary is what that's designed for. Secondary, there may be other opportunities to help offset the cost.
Okay.
We know that these can be or tend to be expensive, so we want the ability to help pay for them. But the primary benefit we're hoping will be Yukon businesses as well as Yukon events. Try to pull them off before we go all the way into Oklahoma City is what we're trying to do. Amen.
That way we'd have more traffic, right?
Traffic's an issue, unfortunately, but as you well know that we all live by sales tax and divestment tax. So we're looking at opportunities to help, uh, offset service costs that we have elsewhere. So this is hopefully a, uh, meaningful opportunity that we have coming forward.
Any other questions from the commission?
And it could be used to encourage the water park people to get up on the first scale and not park.
Well, opportunities could work in many ways.
Okay, does someone care to read the proposal?
I'll read it. In the case of the application for a conditional use permit submitted by the city of Yukon, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following condition. One, appropriate sign permits will be applied for and reviewed for compliance in ordinance one three five three, code section two one three dash eleven.
Okay, any other? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the, uh, conditional use permit of the city of Yukon. Any questions, discussion? Call or roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Okay, that completes our business. Is there any new business tonight?
Mister Chairman, there's no new business.
Open discussion. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Shelley Selby for being the council lady-elect for the next term of the city council. Anybody have anything else?
Uh, we do have one thing. We'll be contacting you to discuss, having a study session to discuss, uh, cellular tires and small cells. So we'll be contacting you to just work through a time to be able to meet and start that process.
Okay.
I do have one item. I just wanna thank everybody for coming out and, and coming to the meeting and making your, your, you know, voicing your concerns. To me, that's what makes Yukon great. Not everything is gonna go exactly the way you kinda planned, but I appreciate you coming out here and, and giving us your concerns because we work for you, you know, up here, so I appreciate it.
That's what, we've had some good discussions in the last month or so, several months of, of different things with people both sides. It's, it's hard to look for the greater good for the, for the whole city, but we do our best up here. And then it goes forward to the city council. If you care to come back, uh, will this be coming up before the council or was this on the daycare?
Uh, yes, both the zoning and the conditional use permit will go forward to the city council.
Okay. At the council meeting in a couple of weeks, it'll be heard again. You're welcome to voice your concerns at that time. They have the final say. Anything else? This meeting, uh, our next meeting will be what?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. This meeting's adjourned.